So this was a GoPro film that we caught a couple of years ago, I took. And this is red, so you can see how all the stones are polished. The female fish will come in, lay on her side, and she will thrash the ground and move all the sediment out and build a rock nest. And so we had about five fish stationed in here, and I just left the GoPro. It's really a challenge. I have a fond appreciation for wildlife photographers, because you could sit in the same spot, wait, 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 and you never catch the shot. And some of the issues that you fight in this small stream was that you have sediment that comes off of the storm. So the storm that's coming in the next couple of days, that's going to reset the water. We're going to have to wait a couple of days before we can actually see the fish. But this was just ideal conditions, and it's just kind of cool to see. And that shallow water, those are 15-pound fish. We had fish up to 35 pounds that were in the watershed, just amazing. This is also in an area where we're going to be doing a restoration project. So I'll talk to those slides here on the second. This fish is going to bump into the camera, and that will be a... As we go through this, if you've got any questions, just please raise your hand. Again, the goal will be to make sure that people know more about these fish. Because when we first started, I would go into a room and I'd ask, "How many know that we have salmon in the watershed?" And everybody would just look at me with this puzzled expression. And as time has gone on, and more people know about it, then did you have a question?
Yeah. Where is this located as far as one stream?
So this is Los Gatos Creek. If you follow Campbell Avenue, which is right out here, you go right over to where the basketball courts are in the Campbell Park. On the downstream side, where Poplar is, that's the road that goes right along the stream, this is Aquaman Poplar. Just some awesome colors on these fish, too. What happens is as they sink in our system, their bodies are basically starting to decline. And so as time goes on, they get like a fungus, and so you'll see these white furry circles where the fish is basically breaking down. There's about a 15 to 21 to 15-day timeframe for the fish, once it enters from the bay, saltwater to the freshwater. And then the fish basically spawn, and then they expire. Do you have a question? No, it doesn't. They're okay. Good question. You were wondering if it hurts the fish. So I'm going to step onto the next one here. And... Good. I want to introduce, we have a partner working with us today, and we've worked with Sheila and her team over the last several years. I don't know if you saw, in one of them, there's a mural. And that was a creation that we partnered on and brought to the stream on Creekside. And we've also supported her with cleanups, but they've been a great resource, and so I'm going to hand it off to Sheila and let her go over some of these slides.
Well, thank you for having me. And Steve, Carol, all of the Sopin Clean Creek Coalition staff, it's great to be here. It's great to share our message. And I have a feeling after I've talked to a few of you, this is a very informed audience, so I hope I'm at the right level. But I first, I wanted to say, so I'm staff with the West Valley Clean Water Authority. Anybody heard of that program? Okay, well, less important who we are, but rather what we do. So we are Stormwater Authority for the cities of Campbell, La Sraena, Saratoga, and the town of Los Gatos. So we work hand-in-hand with them on their stormwater pollution prevention programs. So my intent is really to share what your cities... Who's here from the West Valley communities? Raise your hand. San Jose? Okay, well, I'm going to be telling you about what we do for the West Valley communities, but every city in this region has the same requirements and they're working on the same program to help keep our creeks clean and our habitat healthy. So we just want to share a little bit about that and what we're doing. So first, I have just to tee the conversation up a little video. We do a lot of education and outreach, and we work with interns. And so this video is a reflection of stormwater pollution in and of itself, and it was created by an intern at West Valley Health.
You live in a watershed. A watershed is a land area that drains to a common water body. Our local creeks, lakes, and wetlands are all part of a watershed. In the Santa Clara Valley, all the water from rain and irrigation, which flows over hard surfaces such as streets and sidewalks, drains into storm drains. The storm drains then lead to creeks and other waterways that flow to San Francisco Bay and onto the Pacific Ocean. Water entering storm drains is called urban runoff or stormwater. With approximately 2 million people living in Santa Clara County, our day-to-day activities can significantly impact the health of local watersheds. Stormwater entering storm drains travels through underground pipes directly into a local creek and the bay, often carrying pollutants with it. Many people mistakenly believe that stormwater entering storm drains flows to the sewage treatment plant. Water that goes down your sink, toilet, and the drains inside your house goes to the sewage treatment plant before being discharged to the bay. Since stormwater is untreated and unfiltered, pollution can quickly impact the health of local waterways. Stormwater pollutants come from our everyday activities, like applying pesticides, leaking auto fluids, curb washing, and vehicle exhaust from driving, leaves, lawn clippings, and dirt from home and landscape improvement projects, litter, microplastics, and disposal of single-use products. Healthy watersheds help provide clean drinking water, healthy habitats for fish and wildlife, and enjoyable outdoor recreation, all supporting our quality of life. Protect our watershed and our natural resources for the health and welfare of all living things. Remember, only rain in the storm drain.
Did we tell you anything you didn't already know? Yes? Okay, I'll take it, I'll take it. So what were key takeaways? Anybody have something? Anybody learn something, or just what do you think that video said? Okay?
Oh, I learned that the stormwater is not treated at all. I thought it was treated like this.
Oh, very good. Via ding 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 ding, t-shirt at the back. All right, what else? Anybody else? What did you learn? Yeah?
I learned about what water cans are.
Okay, very good. You live in a watershed, right? Anybody else? Come on, someone with a t-shirt.
I was washing my car, and right away, that water goes down.
Right. It's both soap and anything that's built up on the outside of your car, heavy metals, exhaust. Good. Anyone else?
Hi. The question just occurred to me, what about commercial car washes?
Yes, actually, that is our preferred recommendation, because they recycle their water, and it's discharged to the sanitary sewer system that is treated.
Good to know.
Yeah, that is our preferred message, for sure. Anybody else want a t-shirt? All right, so yes, first one out of the gate. We do so much outreach and education, and we're constantly focused on, do not believe how many misunderstand the drains in your house versus the drains in the street. And so the drains in the street is what we're concerned about, right? And the reason cities are concerned about it is they have a lot of regulations that are passed down by the state to control what goes in there. They're responsible for that intricate network of piping that leads straight to the waterways and discharges. So some of the common sources of pollution, motor oil, but a lot of other pollutants, right? You have exhaust, you have auto fluids, leaking auto fluids, you have the particles that go off from your tires pollute the water, heavy metals from your brake pads, there's so many sources from cars. But things like pesticides, fertilizers, the animal waste, human waste are things that we are concerned about. Pool water, litter, some things not listed up here are sediment and dirt, right? It's affecting the salmon habitat. And a lot of legacy pollutants like PCBs, mercury, copper, nickel are all areas that we work on.
Question?
Yeah?
So do you guys actually do sampling and testing to see what kind of levels?
We do.
Various things are rolled through this from us?
We do. Our permit requires a wide range of water quality monitoring. It's interesting, we just got an permit from the state, they're five-year permits, and this permit really kind of moved away from monitoring for general water quality health towards monitoring for trash, monitoring the effectiveness of GSI that's being installed through the sediment going toward creeks. We still do a lot of testing for the legacy pollutants, our current PCBs, do a lot of testing for pesticides, and a lot of what are they called? Pesticides of emerging concern, so things like PFOS, IFNOS. So yeah, we do a lot of testing, there's a lot that goes on, and it's getting ready to start because it's going to rain. That's the meat up.
Question?
Yeah?
What happens to the landfills that we have here, the water there? Does it just get absorbed down?
Yeah.
It contaminates the groundwater? Because all that crap that goes landfills, it's not good.
Well, I think that's a good question, and it's not really my area of expertise, but I know that they're built on top of infrastructure that is intended to contain or treat the water. But it does, I've seen it in many communities that be a source of contamination, particularly the old landfills where they weren't sealed very well.
How does the dirt affect the salmon?
Well, I think I'm going to toss that one to Steve. I mean, in general, we're worried, and we'll talk about it in just a minute, but we have a lot of programs to control sediment from both public and private development projects, right? So the requirement to integrate what we call Green Stormwater Infrastructure, or LID, Low-Impact Development, is required in a lot of development projects today on the private side, and any public CIP project, they have to integrate GSI. And it's really intended to try to disconnect all these impermeable surfaces that are flowing water straight to the creeks and allow opportunities through bioswales or permeable pavement, disconnecting your downsides in your home, like whatever you need to do to kind of increase the opportunity for the soil to naturally filter that water before it goes into our local creeks. Sediment, though, increase, I'm assuming, covers up the eggs, the one thing, reduces the habitat, the viability of the salmon to swim.
It's interesting because Los Gatos Creek, as it comes into the main stem of Guadalupe, if you're standing on St. John's Bridge, towards where those streams are entering, Los Gatos Creek is typically like a tea brown clear, and then constantly is silty and muddy. So it's kind of interesting, it seems like there's less salt coming in on Los Gatos Creek than on the main stem of Guadalupe.
All right, this next slide, just really some interesting facts. Did you know that approximately, a stormwater runoff accounts for approximately 30% of pollutants in our waterway? Did you know that just after one inch of rain, an enormous amount of stormwater flows into local waterways? It's estimated that 750 gallons from a typical single-family home, and 27,000 gallons from a one-acre apartment. Did you know that after a rainstorm, five different kinds of pesticides can be detected in the local creeks? And most of them are probably licensed to be sold in body. Did you know that every year, seven trillion tiny little pieces of plastic flow into San Francisco Bay from stormwater? And that represents about 1 million pieces for every man, woman, child in the Bay Area. That is a local storm drain here, Pia took it here, Campbell, Little Raccoon, is where all that dirty water is going. Okay, so I know this, you probably can't see that, can you? This is not an exciting slide, but again, well, I wanted to just share with you the depth and scope of programs and projects that the cities, all cities in the Bay Area, whichever one you're living in, have to implement and are working on to keep the health of the water quality. The first one up there is, I mean, is cooperations. So any city that's doing work in the streets, the public right-of-way, you know, your street sweeping, activities going on in a corporation yard, all controlling stormwater pollution. We talked about new and redevelopment, and the integration of requirements for public and private development. We also do industrial and commercial business inspections, because that could be a typical source of pollution as well, and how they're maintaining their outdoor facilities. We maintain a spill-response line, so you can call or go online and report pollution that you see, and we actively investigate that and clean it up. Rob's owner's back there is our inspector for the West Valley Clean Water Program. You have something to report, make sure you get his card. We also do construction inspections on large projects to make sure you're controlling the dirt. You know, you probably see that in your own neighborhood, not maintaining the perimeter, it's going off the driveway, what have you, those are all concerns, because that's all going into the local waterway in rain. We also do a lot of education. Want to introduce Pia Lusk back there that does all our community outreach, our community events, our schools presentations, and social media and so forth. But really, education is key. You know, stormwater is not a very exciting topic. Do you agree? It's hard to get some excitement about it, but it really is important. So we do a lot of education. All right, and then we talked about water quality monitoring, so I won't go into that, that was a great question. Trash mitigation, that's probably all an area of interest for you all. We have specific numeric targets to reduce trash in our communities. And I can tell you, you know, through opportunities to partner with forces like South Valley Clean Creeks Coalition, our cleanups are exceptional. Also, active installation of what's called trash capture devices. So in all these storm drains, there's these devices that collect, catch the trash before it goes into our waterways, and the maintenance crews from the cities are cleaning those out regularly, especially during the rainy season, to prevent that from getting into our creeks. And, you know, things like plastic bag bins, you know, not buying one-time use products, I mean, something that we all can do. So we have worked on a variety of bins for different types of projects or products. Up here on the right, I can hardly see it myself, pesticides, right? Pesticides both in what we apply in our municipal facilities and parks and controlling anything that's toxic, and then also working in the community through education with our nurseries, hardware stores. I don't know if you've ever noticed, but we have point-of-sale in a lot of nurseries in the Santa Clara County that points you to less toxic pesticides that you can use. And then we talked a little bit about POCs, mercury, and then that's about it. So very broad range of programs that we're doing, right? So I'm just going to conclude with just, I don't think I have to tell you guys, although I think you all are engaged in understanding the importance of protecting our environment. But, you know, there's just so much that we all can do, and all take personal responsibility for in our everyday life, just to make some changes that, you know, it's going to, can and will affect the health of our waterways for future generations. So, you know, reach for that less toxic pest control when you have a pest problem next time, or, you know, look at what your pest control operator is purchasing and using. Minimize the purchase of one-time products and plastics, maintain your card, don't wash it in the street. Hope you learned a few tips. Your next, maybe, home improvement project, think about LID, especially in your landscape, and trying to disconnect some of those surfaces that are running straight off your property into the two local creeks. So with that, oops, let me go back. Nope. Well, I think after that might be my question slide, but so that, next thing, creeks on Instagram, Facebook, Twitter.
We got a question up there, too?
Yeah?
Are there results of your testing probably accessible?
Yes, they are. Every year, we have a water year report. It's typically one year behind, maybe that's not that effective, but we're not, we're trying to get that together, but I'd be happy to follow up with you and share the last 2022 report.
Could you say your website again?
It's www.cleancrees.org.
Thank you.
So how large is the watershed?
How large is the watershed?
Large is your watershed? I mean, it seems like, are you basically responsible for the things within the city? And does your authority extend only to the drain and not to the actual water in creeks?
Well, so our authority is really over, as I mentioned at the beginning, that intricate, what we call the NS4, Municipal Storm Drain System. So the city owns those systems, and really, the regulations is the permit that's issued by the state of what kind of control measures you have to do to reduce pollutants from going through the city's storm drain system and discharging into the state's waters. So that's what all those requirements are, and that's really what it's all about. We talk about watersheds and where you live, because I want you to understand that water flows down, right? And wherever you're living, that water's, and, you know, from the top of the mountains, it's kind of flowing down ultimately into a water body somewhere. The West Valley in particular has four different watershed names. Yeah, correct?
Yeah, Waterloo Bay, and that's it.
So, and I don't know the exact names off the top of my head, but we do have watershed maps on our website, if you come to Debbie's Studio, the cleancrees.org.
You can actually, you can actually look at the watershed, all the watershed that goes into the bay, but then you can actually identify the watershed that discharges into each outfall. So when you have an outfall in the creek, and say, for example, there's potential soapy water or something coming out there, then you identify all of that tributary, all the storm drains that are draining into that outfall, and we call that the watershed for that outfall. And every outfall has a separate watershed, and then every area has different watersheds that may flow into a certain water body, whether it's Los Gatos Creek, Saratoga Creek, or any other creek. And so there's a larger watershed, and then there is the little microwatersheds that discharge into each outfall. And so when you're asking watersheds, that's pretty much how it is, is what's draining into there? And then you look at the different land uses that are draining into a specific outfall to sort of get an idea of what could be entering there.
So is your authority mostly concerned with entering from, say, off the sidewalks and stuff like that to the drainage pipe that ends at the rivers and creeks?
We are, but we also have requirements of related unsheltered homeless, and it's focused on those that are in, live in and around waters or waterways, right? And our requirements predominantly center around control of trash and bacteria. So we do understand that it can travel in different mechanisms. Regulatory-wise, they focus predominantly on the storm drain system, but, you know, we know things go into the creek, we, you know, the contribution of the unsheltered populations that are affecting the waterways as well. Anything else? No one kind of went past my tongue, I'm sorry.
Is there anybody, are they interested in building swales before, you know, the storm water goes into the creek?
Absolutely. I was mentioning development, new and redevelopment. Bioswales, if sized properly, are treating the water that runs off. So in particular, you're seeing a lot of it in the public right-of-way being built, right? Between actual hardscapes and the street. You're seeing it in a lot of public facilities. Cities actually have a target, they have to, they have to construct so much GSI, depending on the population over the next four years. But yes, bioswales, and I think we have a poster board back there about bioswales. They do have to be built and sized correctly, but they're great ways to allow the soil to naturally filter rainwater before going into local creeks.
If I may add one extra point on that? Historically, storm drains have been designed to move stormwater very quickly off of the streets, because that's how they were designed. About 20 years ago, or maybe a little longer, the state started looking at that rainwater as a valuable asset, instead of just trying to get it out, and most cities can't keep up with their infrastructure anyway. So what they've done is they've identified green infrastructure where you're catching that groundwater, and instead of flushing it into the bay as quickly as you can, you're actually allowing it to percolate into the ground and replenish groundwater. So that way, you have two benefits. Number one, the pollution is not going into the storm drain, ending up in the bay. And number two, you're actually using that stormwater, which is a valuable commodity, now by replenishing groundwater, rain barrels that catches it, so you can use it in areas of drought. I've seen buildings where they almost have an underground storage vault that they can catch their stormwater in, and then during the summer, pump that out for irrigation. So they're actually looking at stormwater as an asset, as opposed to trying to get rid of it as quickly as possible. And that's why pollutants end up in the creeks and in the bay so quickly, because they're designed to move large volumes of water very quickly into the creek.
Great. Well, thank you so much. We'll be back in the back there, so if you have any questions or you want to stop by before you go, please do.
This is at Lee Avenue. And this was when we first started doing this operation of trying to clean creeks out, where these areas where you have the trash right down in the dry riverbed, and the concern was if we don't get this up and out, then it gets pulsed down the stream, gets wrapped up in the bushes. And that process had probably been repeating for decades before we started doing this work, so there was a lot of legacy trash, a term I did not know, but learned.
That's why I was learning.
There you go. I had to talk to the wrong spot, thank you. And so we were talking about pollutants in here a moment ago. And you have, in this slide, this is just some of the examples, these are batteries that we picked up. In this one, this was under San Fernando Bridge into downtown, and we heard that there were 12 shopping carts under that bridge. And so we went in, we had a group of cleanup, they pulled the top ones that were halfway buried, and they said, "There's 12 more underneath." So there were 24 shopping carts that got pulled out from underneath that bridge. And that was, again, just, you know, accumulation of trash that has gone on for decades, so we've been trying to break that. And you can see, this is under Lincoln Bridge, the trash, with someone living in this area, and then the trash just gets dumped right into the creek. This is under Osere, and it's just sort of been before and after. And so the number of cleanups were up to 417, and we've removed 682 tons, like 1.4, 1.5 million pounds of trash. And, you know, we continue to do this. On Saturday, we had a cleanup, we removed 9.1 tons of trash, with about 68 volunteers. Were there any, was anyone here in the audience that was there? Yes, thank you all for coming on. It was an epic day. And beyond the trash cleanups, we're looking at what can we do to improve the watershed? And so in this picture, what you're seeing is gravel piles. There's one here, there's one further down in here, and this is right behind Prune Yard. And this was a valley water where they came in and they did these gravel piles, and they said that the storms, as they pulsed, would push the gravel down. This pile would get knocked down, and I was thinking, there's no way that's going to happen. Well, after last year, it's gone. So all that gravel went into the stream and is working to recharge that area of the stream back behind Prune Yard. And then this is a project area that we're going to be working in, and this is, the bridge that you see, this is basically Campbell Avenue. And then we were talking about an outflow right here that shoots water off the streets, and then this barrier... And then this barrier, when the salmon start coming in after the storms, they get to this point. And then you can actually stand up on this, there's like a, um, cantilevered area where the path goes. Look down and you'll watch the fish jumping up, trying to get up over this thing. Problem is that it's too high for them to, to leap up onto and it's a cement apron. So the fish get up there, they start thrashing and then they just run out of energy and flop back down. And so what we're going to be doing is, um, I'll, I'll let the, uh, the slide explain it here. We're gonna be, this is a, a red, a nest. And the original video that we showed, this is that red and it's right in this area of Las Gatas Creek. There's the Seventeen Freeway, there's Campbell Avenue, that waterfall area is here. So we're gonna be working this whole section. And this is just showing how we're gonna work on the, you know, putting the, the right slope on the creek. The project's gonna be all one point five million dollars. And we're funding the first part of it, which is all of the permitting. And this is just some of the graphic, uh, things that they put together for this. So again, adding gravel. And I guess the device that they have is it's, it's almost like a vacuum cleaner in reverse. They have a hopper up on the hill, they'll feed gravel into it and that hose goes all the way down to the creek. And there's someone down just moving it back and forth and it's depositing new fresh gravel into that area. So we're gonna recharge this. And these sort of projects that not really happened along Las Gatas Creek or the Guadalupe. More so on the Guad, uh, Las Gatas Creek, there's that one that I showed you earlier, that salmon.
So does the gravel raise the water level so they can get up on the creeper?
You can see here, it's a fish trying to get up over it and I'll explain what we're gonna do. The gravel will move. So if we have a storm, that will not work. So there's a big fish coming out, you'll see that it's gotta fall backwards. And we found some that had fallen into the rocks over here and basically they, they expired. So it's really important that we, it's basically a fish trap that is not, you know, beneficial for the fish. And so what, what we're gonna do is in this area, probably about twenty feet away from this barrier, we're gonna build a cemented, like burn. The water will pass over it, so the fish will have no problem getting over it. But what that'll enable, it'll take the height of the water, which is here right now, this, this barrier. And it'll move it so that we move the water up to here and the fish can easily then hop over that. So that, that's the design and goal of, of this project. But I was at, really surprised at the cost. But what we've been able to do with this cleanups is we'll bring corporate groups in. Uh, we have funding through the city, take that money, put it in the bank and then use it for these projects. Our permitting piece alone will be two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So we're gonna be paying for that out of pocket. Once we have that, uh, design work and permit done, then we're gonna take it to NOAA and C D F W uh, and find their grant programs, which they have, and they have millions of dollars. We'll, we'll be working with, uh, McVane Associates that does work with, uh, Valley Water as well. So next steps, we talked a little bit about, uh, develop the conceptual design and cost, gravel augmentation, and then remediating that fish barrier. And it's gonna be out, as I said, one point five million. I'm gonna hand this over to Jordan.
Hi guys. My name is Jordan. I've been an intern here for close to two years now. And I had the opportunity to work on Las Gatas Creek Revegetation Project. Uh, this part, this project originally started in two thousand nineteen when we got the grant funding. But, you know, because of COVID, things slowed down, we couldn't get the permits that we needed. But this year, we finally got all the permission and had everything to actually, that put on the project site. We were able to get in two this year. Um, this is what it originally looked like. Uh, this is just a giant mound of arudodonax. It's a perennial grass that grows thirty feet tall, it's drought resistant, it grows in stalks. It's a monster. It's a beast. Um, but this is, this is the pile that we ended up with. Uh, we had the students stand right on top, you can't even see the base of it. Uh, we had to get a shredder just to fit everything inside, uh, a forty cubic, um, yard container. And this is just a picture of one of the, uh, events. So this is the entire project site. This is, I think it's twelve ten acre lot that we are trying to, um, re-vegetate. We focused on this area and this is that giant mound that I pointed to earlier. We cleared out about, we wanna say seventy-five percent of it. There's so much to do. There's, we also got this area right over here that is completely gone now. This one's gone. And then we also went over to this over here where it was actually started that plant. So I wanna say we had a pretty good starting hit with just two events. Uh, we couldn't have done this without Valley Water, who got the grant through, uh, and Ecological Concerns, who we are actually partnering with. They do revegetation projects all throughout San Jose. They've been, they've been on it for quite a long time too. And Harker School. Harker, when they came out, they contributed like two hundred and forty hours of volunteer time. Just one day, which is, is a lot. But, um, the reason why we do these projects is for the health of the ecosystem. We want a reliable, healthy waterway and for, you know, just the animals that live there too. Right here, actually, we have beaver. We have beaver that occupied this section of the creek. And there's not much, uh, thriving native life right there, right now. But through projects like this, we can boost that for them so that they have, you know, that they can actually call home. But they are back, they've been back for a while and they are definitely looking at what we've done. They're just kind of happy. But they, they're doing great. And this is, uh, a quick little.
It's taken to the South Bay now where the community is setting up the return of beavers to Las Gatas Creek. A wildlife power set up by the South Bay Clean Creeks Coalition shows two beavers in action, working us as they do to build the dam. The coalition says beavers have been scarce in the area for their lethal for hundreds of forty years. So the fact that they're returning now is a sign the waterway is helping.
Yeah, sure. They've been gone for a very, very long time. We overhunted them during referred trade eras, eighteen hundreds. We, we like to keep them alive. But, um, they were basically decimated. They were gone. Um, we actually don't know how they got back. Theories are that, um, Department Fish and Wildlife Services actually reintroduced them. We don't know that. However, the other theory is that they migrated back down from that content. Hopefully one of these is correct. But this is actually the first, uh, photo we have of beavers returning. And I know there's no beaver in there, but this is the sign. When we looked at it, we're like, who's hacking away at this tree? And then we saw teeth grooves, we saw the clippings on the ground. So instead of a trail cam, we actually captured an adult beaver, uh, gnawing away at this thing. And it actually had, uh, plastic recurrentis waste. So, you know, that's not good. We had, we had to call someone out there to go help remove that and, you know, it probably lived long and happy after that one. And then over here, um, this is a baby beaver, a tiny little thing. Uh, we were walking along the stream as, you know, we do here. And we noticed this log got chewed up to a point. Uh, I know it's not super detailed, but, you know, there's more little bite marks on there. So we're like, hey, perfect spot for another trail cam. And lo and behold, there's a little baby beaver. This beaver actually got its name through, uh, a community naming competition. And everybody finally settled on Justin Beaver. Yeah. I think he got. And then over here, this is a very rare, here, let's go back and let's see if they'll play it. Yeah, this is a, I, I wanna say very rare video of, you know, beavers in daylight. They're nocturnal. We don't see that. But, you know, by chance, we just happened to be right below the creek when it happened. And it actually swam up right next to the cameraman and then just scurried away. But they look good. I'm really happy they're here. Um, over here, sorry, this was actually in the Las Gatas Creek in Guadalupe. And then over here, we have some in the Coyote Creek and, uh, Point West. This dam over here is in the Coyote Creek. Uh, it was found by, uh, San Jose. And we partnered with Deanta to set up a trail cam and monitor the activity around it. Uh, we actually realized the beaver, we're still, you know, building it, plugging the holes it needs to, it needs to plug. And it just kept on developing that way. Over here, this one was by, um, Strong and Happy Beaver. And it just really shows how they've hunkered down here. This is where they belong. This is what they're used to and they're finally able to stretch to like Coyote Creek. And, you know, Point West is very far places and I'm really surprised that they're able to come back as quick as they did. But, you know, there's a long road ahead. It just shows there's a development in the population number. They're able to, to revitalize these, these areas of the creek. For instance, the dam itself is very beneficial to our watershed. Not only does it replenish groundwater, but it also floods the area. It, it helps plants get more water. Um, it, it's a shelter for other animals as well, like ducks, raccoons, opossums, any animal that, you know, wants to escape. And the water is actually filtered by the dam, so it's very beneficial for the salmon as well. It reduces the sediment, sediment level so that fish or like salmon have an easier, uh, time just cleaning their nest out.
Oh, how, how do these, how, how do, how do the dams hold up when you've got high water flows coming down the creek?
I wanna say they're pretty decent at it, but, you know, sometimes the water might just rush right over it and they'll have to re, rebuild. But I wanna say the majority of the time, they, the water finds another way.
They did, they did get blasted out.
The last one.
But again, the beaver come back in and will build up in other areas. But it's interesting how intricate these dams are. You'll have a dam across the waterway and they'll have like a side tributary that goes, you know, twenty-five yards and then breaks in. And then they extend it even further. And so in that Campbell area, that's what you would see. You'd see about three dams and then these side channels.
Is it, are, are people having any issues with these dams being built?
Well, that's the thing. The people, obviously Valley Water's concerned about flooding. And so, and they had sort of labeled the beaver as non-native. Of course it's non-native. It was trapped to, you know, to extinction. But what's happened is the state's come in with sort of looking at these beaver and the benefit that they provide and saying, we all have to get along. So Valley Water was really kind of just hands off with the beaver. You know, they do come in and do some vegetation work and at times they're spraying, you know, to kill plants. And it's in the same area where these beaver are living. So there's a colony of beaver that's been in Las Gatas Creek and Campbell for the last eight years. And they're just happy and you get the, uh, you know, the, uh, young adolescent beaver that get tired of being with mom and pop. Storms come, boom, they get pulsed out of the waterway down to the main stem of the guay and then either get pushed out and go up to Coyote Creek or go up, you know, up, uh, towards, you know, Mountain View Palo Alto. And there's been the sighting up there of the young beaver as well, uh, family that's up in there. So this is kind of ground zero for the, the, the beginning of this, you know, expansion of beaver, which is kind of cool.
We're actually at a recent cleanup and we went back there because, you know, there was more trash in the area. But there was also new, um, beaver bites along where we had just cleaned up. So it definitely, it definitely shows that they're on the move.
So just the timing, you said, it's just been the last eight years?
Yes.
From identification to establishment?
Been about, been about ten years.
Ten years?
And the salmon? What's the timeframe on them?
Um, the salmon have been here since the nineties and they probably, anecdotal, I'm gonna be going into a couple of slides here about that. Like this one right here. The salmon in this, one of the challenges that we've had were trying to figure out salmon versus trout. They sort of grouped them as one. So a salmon was a trout and so it added some confusion. But some of the articles that came out from the turn of the century labeled it separated the fish. And so they're talking about fish that farmers are taking out with pitchforks, salmon. And so you know that they've been here. They've also done, uh, some archaeological digs, uh, in some of these, uh, Indian areas where the Indians were living. And they found bones, they had those tested and they came back as salmon. So they, they've been here all along, which is really kind of cool that they're coming back. That's the exciting part of it. Now, on the left, that's a study that was done before they came in and did the flood control project in the downtown where they put, uh, cement mats on the ground level. So the fish lost all of that habitat. And this report was counting the number of nests that were in that area. And I wanna say it's like in the six hundred, can't tell from looking at that, but six hundred nests that were in that area. And that did not, that was the main step in Guadalupe. So in the eighties, this is what we knew. There were close to two thousand fish that were coming up in this watershed. When we started our work, it was probably down to about a hundred fish. So it was really getting to a popular dire. If we didn't really make it, uh, change, we could, we could lose this whole, you know, resource. And then on the right, this is Valley Water. Initially, they were super excited about these fish. So they tracked the fish coming in and then they would, you know, tag them, you know, count them and document what, what they were finding. And so these were just some of the fish and you can see how big that, that top one is. But we see fish about that large as well yearly. Here's a quick video.
Is about to create new life. She cleans and shapes the gravel to form a string of nests called reds. The stream current carries away any fine sediment. She deposits thousands of eggs over a period of a few days. Each time, her male partner immediately fertilizes them. She covers the now fertile eggs with clean gravel, then stays for a couple of weeks to defend her nests. Cold, clean water is crucial for healthy growth and survival. Water flowing through the gravel continually delivers oxygen to developing eggs and carries away wastes. Here in the gravel, the eggs hatch. The young, or fry, depend on the yolk sac for nourishment. These tiny fish with their yolk sacs still attached are called sac fry. When they are ready, they move upward through the gravel to emerge into the stream. Once they are one inch long, they are called fingerlings. They will remember this stream and its smell, returning when they are adults to spawn and die, just as their parents did.
We'll, we'll stop at here. All right, um, we basically have two types of fish that are coming in. And you can tell by this visual here. You can see that little knob, that's an adipose fin. If that's missing like this, we know that that fish came from a hatchery. And what they do is they snip that fin on twenty-five percent of the fish that they release. So if there's a hundred going in, twenty-five of them have that fin snipped. And then they place this coated wire tag, looks like a little slug and that's a finger, into the forehead of the fish. And so it then will mature, when we're out doing our monitoring, if we find a fish that has that fin missing, we take the head off the fish and then we give it to the Department of Fish and Wildlife, their biologists. And they will come in and sort of cut through the, the cartilage of the, of the, the forehead, retrieve that marker and it tells age of the fish, where it was deposited into, you know, where they released the fish, which hatchery it came from. There's a lot of data points that they will get from that information. So C D F W is super happy when we provide those. Last year, we gave them sixteen fish. So it was, it was a very productive year. And this is just our collection going on. How many, how many fish did you guys harvest that day? Josh? Josh, how many fish did you guys harvest that day? Was it?
Uh, fifty-one.
No, the day that you, on the back of the truck.
Oh, on that day, um, I think it was around like eight that we had twelve.
Yeah, which is a good, good day because they, it's really tough to find these. Once they pass, some of the fish will swim into the bushes and you, you cannot find it if you're looking down. So it's like, it's kind of like a treasure hunt as we're looking for these fish. And then here's just some pictures of some of the carcasses. And so we'll, we will, uh, you know, we'll look at, um, recording the length of the fish, the sex of the fish. We'll look inside and see, did it, was it, was there a successful spawn? You know, are there any still in the, the cavity if it's a female? And we keep that each year and forward it on to C D F W. One of the things that we're looking for with the other fish that have that adipose fin is it was always believed that that other seventy-five percent that have that fin, they're coming from the hatcheries. That was the assumption. And the testing that we used to do was, you know, DNA testing. And this was what Valley Water did. This is what, this was the, the, uh, you know, what, what, the only way that you could, uh, you know, test a fish. So you can see here is your adipose fin. And let's see. I'll talk about the first one. We were taking a fin snip and then turning that in and getting DNA testing done. And what we, what. And what we, what was coming back is they said, it's inconclusive, it looks like this is a hatchery fish. So we put a couple thousand dollars into this research and all these fish. UC Davis came back to us and said, well, we've got a new way of testing and we look for the, the, uh, the food that they're feeding in the hatchery. It's a nitrate base and then with that, you can then look at their odalith, which is the eye lens. And they shake that and then they test it and it's like a radioisotope test. And in two thousand nineteen, we had, we harvested six fish. Two of the fish came back with no nitrate, which means that they're wild fish. So, I mean, we don't know where this is gonna go, but it's kind of cool knowing now all of a sudden, they're not all hatchery fish. We have wild fish coming in. And so last year, we harvested fifty-one fish, so we've got a lot of samples that will give us some good information. The other thing that we're doing that they wanted us to do was, here's a watershed, we basically went in and took water samples. What Noah has done with UC Davis is they've gone into all of the western Sierras and all of those rivers and collected water. And there's a unique signature based on minerals and other, you know, aspects of that, of those waterways that we will have unique to our streams. And so what we will be doing is, there is a, the ear bone, which is called an odalith. We will be matching that up to the odalith test, to the water testing. And we will be able to tell in another year, because it takes, there's a two-year cycle on these fish. When they spawn, go out into the ocean and return. So in another year, we're gonna take those samples and we'll be able to tell if those fish were born in Los Gatos Creek or were born on the Guadalupe. So it's really come a long way with what we can find out, you know, from our, our testing. And again, here's the nitrate you can see on the left and then on the right is just bugs that are in the water. And this just shows the fish outmigrating. And then sort of the, this is an odalith. Under a, under a magnifying glass. And again, here are the, here's the, uh, our testing from two thousand nineteen. These two are the wild fish, the others follow this, this, uh, linear line. And, uh, doing the water testing, which was super fun. And this is, down at the bottom here, one of the things that we do is we log where we see the fish and these live on our website. So if you wanted to see what's been happening over the last, I think it's about six years, we've got record on. You can go to these maps and large them, get one of those little blue, uh, circles and it will launch. And you'll see a picture of maybe a, a, a nest or a carcass of a fish or live fish. So we're, we're monitoring that as well. And this was one of the community events that we have each year. We invite public to come and see fish in action. You think we spread that out, but that's actually those two fish are just on crazy. And I think that's it. No, okay. And this one you're seeing a female sort of starting to dig a red. So again, she gets on her side, by the end of that cycle of building that nest, that tail will be sort of like stained off, I mean, she'll still have her tail, but it'll be all the cartilage and bony parts of the fish tail. And then this is what a red looks like. You can see how it's all polished rock and over here it's all mossy and green and dirty, that's a nest. So if you're walking along the trail and you look down, that's something that you could, would be an indicator that you have a, a salmon red there. And then just some ideas of where to be looking too. They like transitional areas, uh, to set up their nest because there's a lot of flow, which means there's a lot of oxygen and bug, bugs for the, the young fish. So in here, what you're seeing is, it turns into like a little riffle area. The water speeds up and goes through here, so they'll dig their reds right in here. So you can see this one dug up and a huge red. And then here you see these circles, the fish was trying to dig a red in there, but it was just silty mud. So the fish will move on, that's not a good, uh, spot for a fish. That's right where Ross Creek comes into Gwah too. And then just what we see when we're going along, these are some of the carcasses that are, you know, just waiting for us to, you know, try and collect specimens from. We also have been putting up signs, if you're going along the trail, you'll start seeing our signs for the no fishing. We're trying to encourage people so that they will like, well, poach the fish. And that's really been, it's been a free-for-all. Before we started doing this, if you ever go, how many people are fisher people here? Any of you fish? Okay, when you go fishing, oftentimes you'll see, uh, the ranks posted, no fishing during this period of time, the area is closed for fishing. There's none of that going on in our area, so we had to become sort of like the, the fish police to make sure that people knew that you can't be fishing. And then sort of, here's a fish trap right here, this is under Virginia Street on the Gwah. So this real shallow area, the fish jump in and if they're lucky, they get into here, but then they're trapped, they can't get into here and they can't get up over this rise. So people would then just come in and harvest the fish. So we would come in and knock down that barrier, they'd build it back up, I mean, it was like a back and forth sort of thing. And then the Conservation Corps came up and helped us, this is underneath the eighty-seven freeway where we had to clean up on Saturday. This is that spot. So it's really kind of a constant thing. Couple of the traps, this one on the left that I'm holding, that's Los Gatos Creek around Lee, between Lee and Baskin. And then the other one on the right is down at Park Avenue in the downtown. We're trying something over the last couple of years different. Instead of trying to not engage with the unhoused that are looking right by the stream, they know that the fish are in. They hear them thrashing at night as they're moving up. And so we have actually handed over like a wanted poster with my number, my name and said, look, if you find a fish, don't touch it. And if it's a dead fish, give us a call, we'll give you a fifty-dollar gift certificate. So last year, we had five people, uh, the unhoused people, give us a rank and we were able to give out those gift certificates. So I think this year with these flyers, we, we touched more people along Los Gatos Creek, we haven't done the Gwah yet. And then this is just, obviously, you know, we have eventually we want to see the migration of the unhoused away from our streams because it just, the harm that goes on, you know, they just, there's no place for the trash to go. It's kind of not the most humane area for anyone to be calling home, so you know, the push to get people into these tiny homes and scale that is, is really, you know, a, a promising, you know, event. And I was talking to Scott here a bit ago about this. This is actually one of the, the, uh, programs that's gonna, uh, come online along the Guadalupe between, um, is it Blossom Hill Road down to?
Ranau.
Ranau, yes. And so they're gonna be housing the folks that are there now, um, and then prevent people from coming back in and reusing campings. So we can get into these areas and actually really give them a thorough cleaning and it will help the spawning fish too. Okay? Uh, results from testing of the fish from last year. You know, um, we're competing against huge events that Noah's got. The, the gal that's running this program loves what we're doing. And she really had no idea that this was like an urban creek. And so the challenge is having us, you know, clean all the trash out. You know, she's dealing with pristine watersheds, you know, up in the Sierras and, you know, the foothills of the Sierras. So she has, and she has small projects like this around the, uh, state of California. We won't know anything, it could be six months to a year.
Hi everybody, I'm Joshua Lopez and I'm working here at the South Bay Creek's Coalition. Uh, I started in twenty nineteen and I worked my way up and now I run the social media accounts and some of the events.
Josh, I'm feeding out.
Oh, closer, right? Okay, so, um, yeah, so my name is Joshua Lopez, I started as an intern and, uh, in twenty nineteen. And I worked my way up and now I run the social media accounts and some of the events. And, uh, for the, for the fall, uh, salmon run in San Jose, uh, we tried to, we've been trying to do this every year. Uh, but obviously there's been some issues since twenty twenty. And so this year, we, we're hoping that the conditions in the streams are optimal. We're waiting for the temperature to go, uh, down, uh, far enough so the salmon can swim upstream. And also for there to be enough of a concentration of salmon in the stream. Because we want to bring the public out so they can actually see this spectacle happen, um, before their, their eyes. Uh, so, uh, when the conditions are right, it's usually around mid-December to the end of December. We send out an invitation through Eventbrite so the public can come out and actually see this happen. And, um, the year that we did it was, I think, was it twenty twenty-one? That we, last couple of years we, uh, where we had, where we brought out, well, uh, for one of these events, we, we had so many fish that we were able to have three time slots of people to come out and see them. So hopefully we get lucky and we get to see that many fish in the stream this year. Um, but for that, oh, other way, there we go. Okay, so, uh, some of the things that we take out when we go monitoring, um, we have our anti-fishing signs. We have our little markers, that way we can make sure we're not, uh, doubling up on data. And then we have our permit, a brochure and some notekeeping skills. Um, so if you see any of these things out in the trail, or on the trail or in the creek, it's, it's from us. Um, like I mentioned, sometimes you'll see us, uh, walking around in the creeks with some rakes. I know it looks a little fishy, but I promise you, we're doing good things out there. We're trying to track the salmon, we're looking for reds and also trying to, uh, it's kind of like, uh, a really short time window that we have once the salmon start dying and they, they finally die because they tend to float downstream and they can get lodged into rocks. Or we're also kind of racing, uh, other animals that are trying to eat them. Once they start decaying and they start smelling freak bad, that's a pretty good sign for a hungry animal to go find a good meal. So it's always a race around this time for us. So, um, with that being said, uh, so, uh, during our time period that we've been searching for salmon, um, we sometimes misidentify and these are some of the bigger culprits that, uh, kind of give us some, uh, confusion. Especially if we're like looking down from a bridge, it's kind of hard to see exactly what's there sometimes and they're moving pretty quickly. But the major culprit that most people, uh, misidentify, uh, as salmon is carp. And it's because they're a little dark. And just like salmon, they're kind of like dark, kind of grayish. So that's the one that you almost likely, uh, misidentify, you know, confuse with salmon. And, uh, but these guys, uh, one of the things about them, so you can tell the difference, is that these salmon are a lot shorter. Or sorry, these, the carp are a lot shorter than salmon. So, um, we want the public to come out and monitor on their own. We would like them to, uh, go out into the trails, go on bridges and look down. But we want you guys to follow some best practices and one of those is to wear polarized sunglasses. Uh, this way, so whenever you're looking down into the stream, the glare doesn't interfere with your eyes and you're able to see clearly into the water. Uh, we also, um, so since our winter, uh, season tends to be a little rainy, uh, that can make the water murky. So we want people to wait maybe a couple of days for the stream to clear up. And it's also kind of hard to look at salmon when it's raining, right? So we don't want anybody doing that out there. So, uh, aside from that, we want people to document as much as they can, whether it's, uh, photos or video. But when you're documenting these things, be sure to watch out for reflections or shadows, because that can ruin some really great footage. I've done it in the past and it's a pain. So, and then aside from that, uh, with any of that stuff, uh, capture, we want you to send it to our email at info@sbthecreeks.com. Or if you are on our Slack channel, which we, we will talk about in the next slide, send it to that too. Uh, so salmon, like I mentioned, they have a very short time window to be able to spawn. So they're, uh, that's, they're, that's all they're thinking about. So, um, they're gonna do anything in their power to make that happen. And they're really skittish, so we ask people that if you want to get a closer look at the salmon, if you get to see one, to wear dark clothing because they can actually see the shadows of your body from out of the water. And to sneak up on, onto the stream. Like I mentioned, they're really skittish, so if they hear anything or if they see any shadows, they're out of there right away. And then, um, if you see a red, um, sometimes it's not the most exciting part of salmon monitoring. But hang around, you might be able to see a female salmon that's guarding, uh, the red after she laid her eggs. Or you might see a suitor come by looking, you know, to spawn. Uh, but, oh, there we go. So now for the Slack setup, we want people to, uh, if they're gonna go monitoring with us, we want people to sign up for our Slack. And Jordan will be able to explain how to do this.
Any questions?
I have a question, Steve.
Yeah.
Uh, of the three, um, streams or creeks and the river that we clean, would you agree that the, uh, Coyote Creek is the worst or toxic of the three?
I'd say that it's, it has some challenges. I, I don't really spend a lot of time there. There has been in the past a lot of trash related to encampments. I just don't get over that, I don't understand that often.
All right, so Slack is gonna be our locus of communication. This is where the location will be stated, the time will be stated and the material that you need will be stated. So if anybody does want to come out with us to salmon monitor, please scan this. Either right now or somehow give us your email so that we can get you on Slack. Uh, there's an introductory section in the Slack, just giving you the whereabouts of where to look for, to look, uh, look for the information on Slack, um, which area, which channels that we're called, uh, will be used for what. There's a photos and video section and that's where, uh, Joshua's telling you to put, uh, the photos and videos that you were gonna, uh, make. But the link is good for ten days, uh, this is exactly how you'll coordinate with the team member. So, everybody who's gonna be using this and everybody who's gonna go out is a volunteer. So the time that they are planning to go out is most likely the time that they are only available. And, you know, the location might also be, you know, unmovable. But you can always talk to the coordinator directly from there. There's a section there that you can click their name and instantly talk to them. But otherwise, the salmon monitoring section will be where all the information is, the location, the time and the gear.
We'll probably be putting it up on Facebook as well.
Yes, it'll, it'll.
They have some challenges with this. And Jordan can work after and if you want some help with loading this application, he can give you a little bit of help.
Absolutely, I will be here. And then for our data collection, uh, this is for, um, core team members, but we just wanted to give you guys a look at how we actually collect the data. So we use Survey one, two, three, it's, uh, it's for our GIS, it's basically the map software right here. But this is what, uh, we see. So we have what our observation, whether it's a red, a carcass or, you know, a live salmon. And we'll click either of those options, we'll have our GPS shared with the app so we know exactly where we are whenever we submit that location. Uh, we also can provide temperature information, pH information, turbidity, uh, whatever, whatever notes we might want to add on as well. All of that will be, uh, uped on this form. And then, since this is live, this is actually a, uh, first time now that our map is gonna be live. So every time we submit something, you'll instantly be able to see it on our website where we hold the twenty twenty-three, um, map for the data. But this is how we typically, uh, collect our information and this is how, it's just worth for us. But this will be a core member team, um, core team member, uh, project, it's just for education purposes.
Okay, we're getting to the end here. Really wanted, there's a lot of groups that are supporting what we're doing, so we wanted to just sort of highlight just some of them. Uh, that are helping us to move this thing along. You know, we're in the schools, we're working with corporations, also the different cities and, uh, you know, Valley Water. And then the last thing that we have is, we thought it would be kind of a nice, you know, thing to come up with some sort of a recognition. And so we've put together a, a monitoring award, it's a perpetual trophy. And so each year, we pick a group or a person that, you know, was, uh, a lot of help that year. And so the group this year, and it's interesting because there's no one from their organization here because they have a couple of fish shops that they're doing, one up, I think, up in Trinity. And so it's, uh, San Jose Flycasters. San Jose Flycasters has been a strong supporter of what we've been doing for the last, you know, ten years, ten and a half years. We have a board member that's from that group. And then their support with cleanups, with donations, with, you know, just really a lot of help with what we're getting done. So we're gonna put them on the perpetual trophy. This, the, uh, the thing was sort of like coming apart. We thought this would be a good home for it, so. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think that is the last slide. So if, are there any questions? Won't we let you guys go? Yes.
Does that Slack help you find out about the cleanups? That's, that's something, I begin where you guys through Facebook. Whenever I stumbled with the algorithm dished it out to me, it was like a day or two after the cleanup. And I was like, ah, how do I find out about? And I was like, ah, how do I find out about these things? So I can, that's what brought me here because I didn't find out any time.
So Carol, what can we do as far as can we give her a link for that, right?
Well, the events are on Facebook and Eventbrite, but I can't talk to you.
Good. Yeah, so we can get you connected up. Any other questions? Well, I hope to see some of you out at the monitoring that we're doing. So it'll either be on the Facebook, we'll have it on the Eventbrite, and we'll also have it in Slack. And these fish kind of go in a bell curve. So right now, we've been searching for them. This last week, we were out two times walking the streams. Most of Los Gatos Creek we had. And we saw two fish, one fish on Los Gatos Creek. And then I think it was about three fish right down at the SAP Center where that park is. And that was it. There's a homeless gentleman that we're working with that lives down near Santa Clara Avenue Street and in the downtown. And he lives right there. So he was hearing the fish coming in. And he's a fisherman. He helps us with our cleanups. Just a great guy. And so he, he has counted, he said, 30 fish that have come through the system. Typically, 50% of the fish coming up the Guad will go down the main stem of the Guadalupe. 50% will go down Los Gatos Creek. So we, I mean, we were calling around in the streets. It was kind of, you know, two days of just a lot of walking and, you know, isolated. And we've got, you know, rigs and all sorts of other stuff with us. So it was an adventure, but with this cold weather, that's what's going to draw them in. There, there's, yes? Uh, you know, they just like the colder water. That's what attracts them in. And also, you know, they can sense when a storm's coming. So when the storm comes, you get more water in the stream and that draws the fish in. So the cooler temperatures and then the storm will close the water. That's what's going to bring them in. So we were a little bit early on this and that's typically the way it is. Bell curve starts here and then it just blows up. So it'll be in the next couple of weeks. We've already got, I think it's in December 1st or 2nd, we've got, that we're doing the biobalance. But that will be tied to a salmon monitoring opportunity. So be on the lookout for that in our, in the Eventbrite or on our Facebook page. And I would encourage you to come out because it's amazing seeing those fish in the water. I mean, to think that they, we're out in the ocean for two years. They come under the Golden Gate Bridge. They swim all the way down to the South Bay area. And then they enter the Guadalupe and come up into these waterways. And it's amazing. And each year, we have that resource sort of replenishing itself. So do make it if you can. We'll also be putting the footage up, you know, videos and whatnot on our page, Facebook page. So that's another opportunity for you to see. So with that, if there are no other questions?
Good question.
Yes?
Is there any evidence that fry actually make it back out to San Francisco Bay?
So good question. So we, the way, there are means for doing that. We could trap the fish and then, you know, count the number of outmigrating fry. But that takes a lot of permitting and we're, we don't, we're not going to be able to pull that one off. But what we have done, and Mike tomorrow, is he still here? Yes. Mike, on Tuesdays, you've caught the young fry out of June.
What's that?
You've caught the young fry around the reds that have emerged and are waiting to go out and outmigrate.
I didn't catch one.
No, no. That's what I meant. Yeah, so he got some great videos. So you can see the fish turning sideways and see the stripes on the fish. There's a lot of videos in our collection on our Facebook page. If you go to the videos and you can just go back on them and see the salmon, the beaver, and, you know, some of the other wildlife that we've got. So we, those two years, and then I, we did it. I did it with our biologist probably five years ago in the downstream section of the Guad. And we were all excited because there were all of these little young fish. And then there was like a king fisher that was sitting there plucking the little guys out. This is so frustrating. You know, nature's going to do what it's going to do. But we got home, we're looking at the video. And when the fish turned, it was just silk, a silver fish. So it was like a, it was not, it was not a salmon. It was some other, you know, species. But, yeah, at the very end, we found a group of them. So we did get some video of some outmigrating salmon. So yeah, so we're going to just keep doing what we're doing. Doing the cleanups, you know, monitoring the fish, turning in, you know, for the samples, doing the vegetation work, doing, you know, large project that's going to become helpful. It was exciting. And we'll just kind of keep everybody posted. You know, we'd love to have you guys come out and participate in some aspects of this. So again, thank you for coming out tonight. And I think that concludes our time.